And I'll meet you speakers.
Okay, thank you.
That's it?
All right. All right, at six thirty, we're gonna call the meeting to order. We start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a meeting of the school board for the purpose of conducting the school corporation's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There will however be time for public participation as indicated by agenda item number five. The board receives agenda item information and rationale for administrative recommendations for their thorough review before each meeting. We have no media here tonight, so we're gonna move right on into recognizing our students of the month. So from Pearson Elementary nominated by Stephanie Campa, we have Julia Baldridge.
Good evening, thank you very much. Stephanie Campbell.
Nominated Julia Baldridge for the Pearson Student of the Month. The reason for the nomination is as such. In life, it is important to surround ourselves with people who radiate joy. Julia Baldridge is one of those people. She's a positive student who does everything with enthusiasm. She is a light in the classroom and to everyone around her. She's hardworking, honest, caring, and a good friend to others. I've appreciated Julia's kind heart and willingness to go above and beyond without being asked. The world would be a better place if more people approached life like Julia does with kindness and sincerity. It is an honor to nominate Julia Baldridge as the May Student of the Month for Pearson Elementary School.
Our congratulations go out to Julia. From South Whitley Elementary nominated by Anna Booze is Eli Walter.
You can talk in there then.
My name is Anna Booze and I nominated Eli Walter Student of the Month. And I just can't say enough about Eli. Eli is such a kind young boy who always comes into class with a great big smile on his face. He's a great friend to all of his classmates and they all look up to him. Eli always tries his best and has shown so much growth this year. I'm so proud of him and I cannot wait to see what the future holds.
Congratulations Eli. The WICO Career Academy Student of the Month nominated by Chad Doms is Guy Howard.
Mr. Doms, not able to hear you clearly. He states that had the privilege of knowing Guy Howard for the last three years. He's a very passionate student who is consistent, calm, and cool-headed. Following the rules and common sense seem to be important to him. It is not uncommon to see Guy standing up for what is right. Although he can roll with the punches, he has a sense of humor and is very determined to use integrity and is always focused on the task at hand. Guy is wise beyond his years and is a mature leader who is helpful, friendly, and involved. He goes beyond, above and beyond in his schoolwork and has always strived to do his best. Guy really enjoys drawing on Fusion 360 and taking those drawings to the lab and utilizing the 3D printers to make the parts. Guy is a pleasure to have in his class and I am always proud to nominate Guy as the Student of the Month.
Our congratulations to Guy. From the WICO Junior High, we have Crew Ebbinghaus nominated by Mike Handback.
I nominated Crew for a couple of reasons. One, he is amazing young man to have in the classroom. Tries hard, will talk to anybody, will try anything, never complains. Except maybe that I haven't gone to a baseball game yet. He's one of those guys that will ask questions if other people won't finish it because he knows what he shouldn't and gets the answer for it. He's very involved at school, he's in organizations, athletics, occasional football games. If you look close to that here tonight. So he's just one of those guys. He is, it could be, one of WICO's top attributes.
Congratulations Crew. From WICO Senior High, we have Caleb Beer nominated by Mrs. Evans.
Caleb has a golf match tonight, so he was unable to be here. I nominated Caleb again. I like those quiet leaders. Somebody in the hallway that is always doing the right thing. And I think what got me the most about Caleb is I called him Jeff, his dad's name, for about half the year until I finally realized as he walked by, that is not Jeff. And I said something to him and he was so polite about it and said, "It's okay, Ms. Evans. It's, you know, it's fine." And just his attitude and his personality, we definitely could use a lot more of Caleb's at WICO. So that is why I nominated him.
Congratulations to Caleb. We have a special presentation now from the WICO FFA chapter about their members' annual accomplishments.
You can, you can talk to them.
So I'm Maggie Holt, I'm currently serving as the WICO FFA president.
My name's Thomas Schiffer, I'm the senior advisor.
I'm Amy Brown, I'm the vice president.
I'm Lucy Yuckin, I'm the secretary.
I'm Gennis Kapu Smith, I'm the director.
I'm probably the showrunner of our board.
And I'm Hannah Thomas, I'm the sentinel.
We put together a little bit of a slideshow just to recap on our year and some of our success and what our members have been up to. So we have our skillathon team. This is our pictures from area. And we have two teams, Paul Fattor State and New Verywell Estate Skillathon.
So Brent Stubeaker was our own member who actually got the American degree. It was a huge honor, so we just wanted to make sure that our parents have been guys to get that out this year.
This is our crafts team. They're all middle schoolers, but they're really great.
This is my wildlife team. This is at the stocking contest. This is when we actually competed at our national contest. We were the second team.
This is our beach betting national trip. We had two teams actually win state and head to Denver for a national trip. And this year we actually had both our teams winning again. And one team continued heading to the national convention in Indianapolis. And then Kansas, other team heading to Kansas City. This is our beach team.
So we just had our district leadership event in March. And we have many members who's very successful, whether they competed as an individual or with a partner, whether it be demonstrations, leadership, anything like that. And we have many members heading to the state conventions here in June.
So this is our wildlife team. We actually moved on to nationals a few weeks ago and Saturday to state. And we actually won state and summer and nationals in Iowa on July thirtieth through August second. So we're gonna be competing in that very soon.
Okay, so earlier in the year, we got the opportunity to do community service at the Caspiusso Farm Bear Barn and Breakfast, which is in Caspiusso at Grace College. A bunch of businesses get together that are ag-related and have speakers. And we help set up the banquet room and help serve breakfast. And then we get to engage with the businesses and talk to them about how we think agriculture is impacting our community, what we think we should improve, and what we think we should improve for the local community.
So I was actually told the one that attended this breakfast, it was the Whitley Farm Bureau Breakfast. It's I was representative of our FA chapter and after talking to representatives and congressmen, they talked about the same thing basically talking about, you know, I know some things are going well in the ag industry. Things that aren't going so great, we need to improve. And so it was really nice to introduce myself to that and kind of meet. So it takes place with these people in the ag industry around here and statewide.
This is one we actually began to keep the bylaws on, we need to, this one where we need peace here.
We attended Huntington Leadership Summit back at the beginning of February. Which is an opportunity where Huntington University opened up their campus and ag department to us. And we have some of the state FFA officers come there and we just get to learn and interact with other FFA members on how to be leaders, not only through FFA, but through our community and other organizations that help us out in our parks.
This was district kickoff, kickoff. So one of our schools in our district came together and we had a fun day, we had games and we gave each other fun and got to meet each other.
So this was national, or last, or national convention. So we had obviously our morning competitor. But otherwise, we just come down and have a day. We got some young men to compete and how young men can go to hopefully show them that. We have our bong sales in the fall and this year we had a very successful bong sale. Sold over two hundred bongs. And a lot of different members participating in that. And we do everything from selling to our bongs, looking back and delivering the bongs.
So we actually had a Christmas tree auction. It was our first one. We bought it in the ag bar, the straightest ag bar, we took it to Denver trip. And it was just as successful. So we had trees and wreaths and we also had cookie bar. And we had people from the community to come in. And it was a live auction. We had auctioneer come in and actually auction off all of the items. So it was really successful and that's something we'll probably do during the year again this year.
This is our plant sales. We sold some at the Whitley kind of grass sale. And we just sold some just last week. And if you guys are interested in buying from our plants, please contact Mrs. Murphy.
Alright, thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a special presentation also tonight from Precision Machining, Jade Hollenbaum and students.
Good afternoon, everybody. About four years ago, I got bored, so I decided I was going to design a clock. And it took me several years to actually get started on it. But as I got started with building it, I would post my progress on Facebook occasionally. And I had a video up there that depicted a clock running in my house. And I posted on there that it would be a good thing that I would, it would be a good project for my kids to do with career pattern, machining too. So someone in this room commented on that. And he said, "Oh my, I'm paraphrasing." "I love it. It's the greatest thing in the world." "If you make one, I would like to be able to acquire that clock." Well, that clock is for Georgia Timmies.
Oh my god.
It doesn't come on this sexy stand there. But it's a wall mount. If you watch it, maybe you may be able to see it. But the wall mount, it goes on the wall and the clock is suspended. It sits on top of it. So a little bit about the clock. We use materials that were here when this was in Houston. We have a wood shop. So I raided the wood shop. We got the wood, made the clock. The metals for the weights and for the pendulum bottom and the pendulum, we got, they were all donated. My parent got a medal. It was just surplus stuff that they gave to us, not one of them were going to do it. So everything in that clock, the stand is from eighty twenty. Everything in the clock, we made from donated materials. The students, they set up the machines, they ran the parts. They, it was a kind of a strong out there because we only did it when we filled in different. We would have a lull in projects, so I would send a couple of kids over to make some clock parts. And it all worked out pretty well that every kid that worked on the clock has signed the back of it. And I will get with you and we will, I will come over to your house and we will get that installed wherever you want. Okay?
Thank you.
Over to you all.
Thank you Jade. We're gonna move on to headliners, which is great news from around the district. We're gonna start with the archery club and congratulations to Sidney Napier, who is the elementary female NASP Bullseye National Champion. She has also placed second in the center shot female elementary bullseye competition. This is a great, amazing accomplishment and we look forward to watching her archery career continue to soar. Art student achievements. In this year's Indiana Connection Calendar Contest, WICO High School art students received two first place grade divisions, an honorable mention, and a Best of Show designation. an honorable mention and a best of show designation. Best of show winner Justine Oaken will be featured in a special write-up in the Electric Consumer Magazine. Waco artists also swept through the Casio's County Lakes and Streams 15th Annual Student Art Contest, receiving seven out of the possible eight high school awards plus an overall best winner. And in C T S, C T E news, we have an award going to Brooke Schrader for being the recipient of the 2022, 2023 C T E Secondary Student Award at the annual C T E Awards for Excellence Program. Brooke is a three-year participant of the Health Science Course Pathway at Waco's Career Academy. And some congratulations to all those folks. At this time, anyone that's student of the month that wishes to leave, you're welcome to do so. In 3.0, we have our principal and director reports and we'll start with Mrs. Evans from the junior senior high.
Thank you. I'd like to talk a little bit about some instruction things that we're moving to next year. At the end of the year, we started doing I G Ps with some of our mentors and what that is, is it sets goals with them on a specific area and then we get to work with them to see if it's actually making an impact on student achievement. And one of the things that we found is, one, it's really neat to be able to interact with those teachers and know exactly what to do to help them. But also it's been really motivational for those teachers to have a really specific goal. And I know next year with N I E T, we're moving more towards those and I think it's only going to be better for our staff. So we're really looking forward to those. We have a lot going on. I'll just kind of go over those events. Tomorrow, we have our jazz band concert. Mr. Mauer is currently in advanced safety training in Indianapolis, so he'll be eligible to be our district advanced training officer. We have our Parkview baseball game on May 17th. We have a band concert on May 18th at 6:30. They're serving marching pop at 5:30. And I would like to warn everybody, I am playing with them and I am in no way a reflection on what the amazing program they are. I just wanted to make that public. May 19th, our senior awards at nine o'clock. We have several students who are receiving awards and I feel like it's just testament to our amazing staff who helped get them here. We are doing what we call a dare adventure challenge. Challenge Officer Clark submitted a grant last year. It's an educational outdoor program where kids are going to be learning about good decision-making as well as doing some physical activities to help them kind of get to the point. So if anybody wants to come out to that, that can't wait on the 24th. And then graduation is set for June 2nd at 6:30. And again, we would like to invite the board members if they can make it to help us out with the homes.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans. Our curriculum and TAP director is Chris Evans.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Mrs. Evans said, the next step for N I E T is I G Ps, individual growth plans. She is kind of piloting that with some of her staff members. The main focus for N I E T has shifted. In the past, I G Ps used to be totally teacher focused. What can I do to improve my skills based on rubric indicators and descriptors? And since N I T has changed their focus just slightly, it is on still teacher professional development, but it's all now on student outcome. So those I G Ps will be based on supporting teachers to create a higher student outcome, which is what we've been talking about since the beginning of this year. It's all based on student achievement, whether that is in grades or test scores or programs represented. That training actually will be taking place this coming Monday in the TAP room. All I L T members, the instructional leadership team, which are principal, master, member teacher will be involved in that. Two elementaries will be coming in the morning and then junior, senior high and the career academy will be in the afternoon. That will be in the TAP room. And from that, we'll be instituting those next year in all four buildings. The N I T school review process, which I talked a little bit about last month, has been completed. There is final reports. There's a report for each school that will be available to you if you are interested. We look at it as a benchmark. A number of the schools, because of some of the turmoil that's taken place in there, this is really kind of their first year of full implementation. And so we look at it as a benchmark of here's where we are at this time, here's where we need to go. Part of that change will be what are called district I L Ts. Mr. Bavarnik and I happened to attend one of the sessions down at the national convention concerning the district level where it imparts information that is gathered from your school review and then sets that precedent across all of the buildings in the district. So we will be implementing that next year, which should also help us achieve our goals for that N I T review the following year. In June, we will also have a training for all I L T members. That will be goal setting. It'll be review of the year and looking at how we can implement more of the TAP process so that not only the students are achieving more, but also so the teachers understand more of the rubric and more of what their role is in that. Since I learn has ended, some of the stores are beginning to be made available from the state. My hope will be that once those are all completed, I will be able to give you a, an improvement report from last school year until this school year. And at the same time, we are in our final days of N W E A testing. So my goal would be to do as I did before, once that is done, come up with a review to show you the improvement that the schools have made through that process. The last meeting we had for the curriculum committee was on May 9th, as you can see that. We had two vendor presentations, one both remote, one we kind of had to go through ourselves. The hope would be that we can give our recommendation to the superintendent, we then present it to the board by the end of this month.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
From Pierston Elementary, we have Mr. Lane.
Good evening and thank you. I'll keep it relatively short and sweet. We have been on that syllabication and phonics journey and so we completed those assessments and are now analyzing those in our cluster and are going to bring back those results to you guys to see how much our kids grew and their ability to decode and read, decode words. And we have some, you know, positive results initially, but we will finalize those things in the next week or so. In our N I E T site visit or school review, Pierston has dedicated a lot of time and energy towards cluster development and cluster support. So when we think about what we utilize, our instructional leadership team or I L T four, we have spent a lot of time on cluster support. So that, you know, we fortunately or unfortunately, we've had three different master teachers in three years. Now, they've all been fabulous, except maybe the first one was a little questionable, but other than that, they've been fabulous and we continue to want to support them. And we are going to kind of shift that a little bit so that we make sure that we include those I G Ps and that we are meeting our teachers' needs and our student needs individually for those teachers and those students. As of Thursday, we've had 3,950 or so Cubs scare cards come through the office and I'm assuming that we are over 4,000 at this point. So those are given to students by staff members, recognizing their ability to show caring, respect, using teamwork, being responsible, or safety. During our penny war, our fourth grade class was the winning class and they are choosing to donate those funds to a local family who is walking through that cancer journey. So that was how they're choosing to share those funds. We have our award ceremony that will take place on May 24th. So next Wednesday, we'll be giving student awards and celebrating student successes. And then next Thursday, we are having our parade for our sixth grade graduation. So Officer Clark and our sixth grade teachers are kind of putting that together. It'll start at 1:30 and we'll have families and students walk through and be cheered on by their younger student body. So we're excited for that as well. Thank you guys very much. Have a fantastic evening.
Thank you. From South Whitley Elementary, Mr. Halsoppel.
All right, we have our I read summer school is June 5th through the 22nd. It's Monday through Thursday, 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. To try and get our students a bump up and then we're going to have them take that I read test again. We've been talking about data cards and we're now using those data cards to make our class lists with that data and what we know about our kids. Teachers have really been pouring into that and I wanted to make, make it known that the teachers have really been taking that seriously, those class lists that we've been making to put our kids in the best possible position to learn, looking at next year. We've been working with our sixth grade especially, but all of our students to get to know that some of the staff at the high school, the junior highs, they're going to be going there, making that transition so that we have similar expectations, so they know what to expect when they go to the junior, senior high school to learn and follow their expectations. Also working with families to build relationships and trying to be proactive with that and making calls, trying to understand. For me, when, when I have an issue with a student, rather than simply doling out a discipline or a punishment, trying to talk with those families and understand what's going on, what they might bring to the table, what they might enlighten us about. Because sometimes these are kindergarten students that we're talking about, you know, these younger kids. We want to try and work with them, learn, learn how we can improve their lives and not just dole out punishments. And that's been helpful. I think parents have been appreciative of that. And lastly, I wanted to name that the P T O, South Whitley Elementary P T O has been a tremendous asset to our staff and students. And I wanted to thank them for all the time and effort that they put into our school.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
From Waco Career Academy, we have Mr. Bennett.
Good evenings. It's the last time we met. Our showcase day went off tremendously again. Had a lot of positive support from business leaders and community. Had over 40 businesses here and 80 business leaders here. So it was a fantastic day for our students. Hosted sixth grade students last week, Friday, Thursday and Friday from Pierston and South Whitley here to the academy to get them kind of acclimated to C T E world and what programming is available and to tour the facility. A lot of things coming up this month with different programs, our education profession, early childhood kids are going to get their final reviews, their final evaluations in their infield classrooms and in their setting. So looking forward to that for them. They're also going to help that Pierston Field Day. Our welding students, they have been actively participating in the American Welding Society certification training, testing that happened last Friday and also today after school. Also getting the submission for their I V tech dual credits as well. Our criminal justice students, they will be earning the following certifications, Hunter Education, C B R, A E D, Stop the Bleed, First Aid and Narcan Administration. All in this last month wrapping those up. Our construction trades kids, again, done a lot of number of projects throughout the community, are finishing up their downtown for the Everly Press Room. Down there working the whole month of May for the most part. Culinary students did a fantastic job of providing snacks and cookies and those things for the showcase and the prom. Our Ag Day is coming up on May 18th for third graders and fifth graders to come out here and I think we have one group coming in the morning and one group in the afternoon. And looking forward to having them here as well.
Thank you. Athletic Director Barry Stinkray.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. Just a couple athletic updates as we wrap up our spring sports. Starting with facilities, right before spring break, we had all pro sound systems come in and sort of review our basketball and football sound systems. We've gotten those results back and now we're just reviewing those results and putting a plan together to get those sound systems updated or replaced. Some important upcoming events, girls track team, they intersectionals tomorrow night at Reeman High School. The Parkview Sports Medicine Baseball Classic will be this Wednesday at 4:30 at Parkview Field. Boys track team, they will go to Clement for sectionals on Thursday evening. And then girls tennis, their pairing show is at seven o'clock tonight. So we will know whether they play either Wednesday or Thursday at Warsaw this week. The softball sectional will be Tuesday, May 22nd. They have the late game, 7:30 at Manchester. And then our baseball sectional, they got the buy and they will play on Saturday, the 27th at Westview. Again, all of these schedules have been updated on Event Link. And just to sort of tie all that into our upcoming physical night as well, on May 25th will be an excellent opportunity for students and families to come get their physical, complete their final forms and we'll have the tech department there as well to assist with final forms and getting the Event Link app on your phone. So especially in the spring season, we see tons of schedule changes and be able just to get a message sent to your cell phone saying, hey, you know, your son or daughter, whatever plays this sport and there's been a change. So a couple feeder program updates, our summer camp packets will be out this week. There will be seven sports camps available throughout the summer in June and July. Pretty excited about that and getting as many of those kids coming back over the summer to participate in our sports camps. Flag football information, we will continue with the flag football program next fall and that information will be out before the end of school. Just trying to keep parents in the loop of what's going on so they come into school year ready to go. We'll have a spring coaches meeting on Friday, May 19th. We'll be discussing upcoming events, summer schedules, and the biggest topic will be the implementation of our Parkview Sports Medicine Strength, Speed and Agility Program. That will start in 2023, 2024 school year. So that's all I have for tonight. Does anybody have any questions?
A lot going on. Thank you. Rhonda Stavely, our Director of Operations.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Transportation, we're working on coming up with a meeting date for our annual safety meeting. All of our C D L drivers have to complete that every year to keep their certification up to date and any new training that might come up during the year that is helpful to them. We have three drivers that are potential drivers that we're sending to the.
Three-day class.
That happens to me every. The three-day class, the end of May, the first couple of days in June. So I'm very hopeful that we're going to start getting some new drivers, some younger drivers that come in because we're all a little bit older than we used to be. Our new gas pumps that we've been anxiously anticipating being installed, they came today and they're working on that. Hopefully that'll wrap up tomorrow and everything will go off the top of the pitch. And that will be one thing I can work on. Maintenance wise, we've been working hard to complete the summer list for things that we can do during the summer that we can't do when we have students in the buildings. So if anybody has anything that they think needs to be on the list, make sure that you talk to your headmaster or you can send me an email and I can make sure it's added to that list. We're, I'm looking at the yard maintenance and some kind of program for the weeds. We mow one day, the dandelions are high the next day. So I'm looking at bids, getting some prices on ways that we can manage that a little bit better so that our grounds and our earth looks even nicer. And lastly, I'm working to develop a replacement plan for all of our mowers and our lawn equipment, weed eaters, things that really take a toll. In the summer months, we work them pretty hard and some of our compost fields are getting compromised. Some kind of replacement plan so that we can keep them all new and operating well. So that's pretty much what we have going on. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
I don't have a question, Rhonda, but I do want to thank you for the extra effort you put into, I saw you working yourself.
Here.
Around the academy to get it ready for the showcase and I appreciate your efforts in getting that taken care of. Looked nice. Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
Thank you. Our Director of Special Services, Allison Keller.
Good evening. Just a couple of things that I want to address that's in the update. It is now May and May is usually the time where staff makes decisions about what they're going to be doing for the next year. So over the course of this school year, I've been collecting applications for speech-language pathologists and I have been calling them throughout the school year. I haven't just been like letting them sit on my desk. And I haven't received any responses from them yet. But now that it's decision-making time, I'm going to be reaching out to those candidates again because I just want to put it out to the community that having an in-person SLP is still a very high priority for the administration at WICCO. We really know that it's important to have someone in person in our building. So I'm going to be reaching out to those candidates again, so hopefully I can hear back some, hear something back from them. And then also, Amy Johnson, the Life Skills Teacher at the high school, she hosted another market where the students in the class, they make a lot of products. And so they make lip balms, they make candles, they made ID badge holders, they made coasters. They made all kinds of really, really cool things and they sold, they sold it to both staff and students during the school day. And it was really successful. It got a lot of funds for the classroom. But it's really cool just to see that educational opportunity for our students. She builds it into the curriculum so they learn, they learn about finance, they learn about money, they learn math. It's just multi-curricular. And then it also helps with that social interaction and it gives them like job skills. And so I just want to commend her for continuing to do that. You know, she is on our list of a discontinuation. So I just wanted to publicly thank her for everything that she did for our Life Skills Program. She really breathed life into that program and so I know that she's going to do well wherever she goes next.
Thank you. Jason Klein, Director of Technology.
Good evening. With the school year winding down, tech department's summer season is ramping up. Preparations for device cleanup, updates, enrollments for Google Classroom and things like that. This summer, we will also be evaluating some systems which may need to be replaced soon. And we will be prioritizing these in areas of these replacements by need and feasibility. And the only other thing I have today is I would like to take this opportunity to say thank you to our own Nicholas Meadows, who has been a valued member of the department since his senior year at WICCO High School. Mr. Meadows has taken a position with the Warsaw Police Department and will be managing their network. He will continue to coach our junior varsity football team. So happily, we won't be completely without him, but I wish him best in everything he does. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Jamie Payna with Little Cats Early Learning Center.
Tomorrow, we will be having our ribbon cutting ceremony for our playground. It is at 1:30 and I'd like to invite all of you to be in attendance. Enrollment for the 23, 24 school year is open and we are accepting public enrollments for zero through age six right now. We have summer care positions available for ages three through six. Our playground fence has been quoted and it will be completed this summer. And something new that wasn't on the board report is that we are going to be working toward a full licensure this summer for the whole program. I'm hoping that is completed by August. It's a lot of work, but it's worth it. Any questions?
Yeah, I have, I have one. Did I recently, I think, heard that you have a teacher or part of your class is teaching sign language to, is it the toddlers? Is that right? Could you tell us about that?
That is part of, thanks. That is part of our curriculum. We use experience early learning and it teaches baby signs and American Sign Language to the infants and toddlers.
So these are kids that may not be speaking that well yet, but they can sign or?
Exactly. So some of them are non-verbal but know how to sign more or please or thank you.
Sneak, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 4.0, our superintendent update. Mr. Pavarini.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for those awesome reports. Mr. Holsopple, last Wednesday, we had a work session in your building and one of your teachers came up and showed me their student scores and one of them scored 100%, one of them scored 95. So the efforts there are tremendously paying off. So thank you all for your hard work on that. And I do want to talk about our work session we had last Wednesday. Work sessions, more work sessions are, public meetings are designed for anybody to come out and talk to the board about upcoming agenda items that are up for consideration. And I just want to thank all the teachers from the elementaries and high school that showed up and spoke with the board. There was a agenda item that was on there. We were looking at eliminating our social-emotional learning program at WICCO and restructuring that along with that program. That would also led to the termination of these mental health therapists. Those staff members came out, spoke with the board, and we had a very good conversation and a lot of good back and forth. And quite frankly, they provided us with a really, a lot of very good information that helped us really step back and rethink our proposal. And what it also did was it showed that the board, even though we've said, often said, the board, your board here is not a rubber stamp. It shows that they are not a rubber stamp. They listen. We all listened. We heard. We stepped back and looked at that proposal again. And what we decided to do with that moving forward is to find a compromised gray area and hearing from the staff themselves, the ones that had the actual boots on the ground. We decided that it would be the best interest to our staff and our community and our students to leave our mental health therapist in place moving forward. So we're doing that. And in our, and looking at the social-emotional learning program, my administrative staff and I will be working over the summer to meet, we are obligated legally to have a multi-tiered system of support, our MTSS program in our school district, which looks at the character building and academic education of the whole student and every student, not just certain students. And the same for the staff, includes all the staff. In fact, we have a training this Wednesday for the committee members in each building. Each building will have a committee, what we call MTSS committee, that will be made up of staff members. We will have our, mental health therapists will be an integral part of those committees and they've been recommended to attend our training this coming Wednesday, next Wednesday, here at the academy. And what we're going to do with that is we're going, and then after that, my administrative team and I over summer will be meeting to look at how we're going to structure the MTSS and the components that fit into that. One of those components would be our social-emotional learning program. So we are looking at ending it the way it's structured right now and rolling that into the MTSS program, taking the positive attributes of that and making that part of our pathway system where it's modeled and mentored by all staff. And also, it does have some oversight into it with our mental health therapists. So our mental health therapy sessions and therapy needs are still there. So I think it's going to be a much more powerful program. I'm convinced it'll be more powerful in that it will be impactful for every student and every staff member in our buildings. And I think we'll see a much better outcome to that. So it's a matter that we're going to be restructuring the mental health therapist and restructuring our cell program into our MTSS program for next year. Secondly, just real quick, I wanted to commend Mr. Scott Worschler. Scott, you're humble. I want you to tell everybody here what happened Saturday with your group.
Yeah, Amy Brown was here. She was on our team. But we had a team for a wildlife habitat education program, it's called, through FFA. And we went to regionals about a month and a half ago and we walked out of there with third place. And kids weren't satisfied with that. Luckily, there's, the top two from each region get to go to state. And then there's three at-large bids and we were able to capture the highest at-large bid. We actually had the third highest score in the state, but it happened to be the third highest score in the region. So they really buckled down. I think maybe a couple of the other teams got a little complacent with their success at regional and we went to state Saturday and they come out of there with the first-place win. And we had to leave the school at 5:30 in the morning and three teenage girls getting on a bus. 5:30 in the morning is not fun for anybody, but I offered to make breakfast. And then we go outside for the first event at 9 o'clock and we get in a downpour. So everybody was wet and cold the entire day, but they were smiling on the way home. So they're excited that come July, we get to go to Iowa for Nationals. And this is our third state title. We won it in FFA in '21. The same team went back as the 4H team in '22 and we won state there and then placed fifth in Nationals. And this is a new team that won the FFA title. And I'm hoping that we can do a little better than fifth place in Nationals. That's our goal. So thanks, everyone, for their support in that and see what happens.
Congratulations to you and your team. Well done.
Thank you. We're going to move on to public comments. We have a couple of public comments, so I'm just going to quickly go over the parameters for those comments. Attendees must register. They're intentioned to participate in the public portion of the meeting upon their arrival at the meeting. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and will be requested to preference their comments by an announcement of their name and group affiliation. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes duration. The presiding officer may prohibit public comments which are frivolous, repetitive, or harassing, interrupt, warn, or terminate a person's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Request any individual to leave the meeting when that person behaves in a manner that is disruptive of the orderly conduct of the meeting. Request the assistance of law enforcement officers in the removal of a disorderly person when that person's behavior interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Or call for a recess or an adjournment to another time when the lack of public decorum so interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting as to warrant such actions. All right. So first up, we have Nate Wessels.
All right. So like you said, I'm Nate Wessels and I am with South Whitley Elementary and also the mental health coordinator. Regarding, whoa. Regarding the SEL. So just like anybody who's watched the news in the last two years, I'm pretty tired of SEL. I don't really, it's become politicized. It's become polarized. And I understand that there are a lot of bad thoughts about SEL. I want to point out some of the features that I do appreciate about it. So we have five competencies that it represents, which are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills or collaboration, and responsible decision-making. Fortunately, our state has other standards called employability standards that really mesh super well with that. And the current curriculum that we use called Sources of Strength, which is what I really want to talk about here, that's what we use for SEL. But I think it would really patch well into employability standards. So this is, this is our grant-funded curriculum that we use right now. We have our teachers, they've been instructed to teach this in the mornings during non-academic soft-start times and that would be weekly. Some of them kind of adjust that a little bit as they need to for their schedule. But we are avoiding taking up academic time to make this happen. Cool thing is those five standards that I mentioned, there's been research that shows that students who are trained in, well, SEL, but in those competencies, scored 11 percentile points higher in standardized testing. And more long-term results, it's actually 13% higher long-term academically, which I found to be pretty cool. So with this grant-funded curriculum, we, I'll just show you real quick. So we have basically eight sources of strength. We have family support, positive friends, mentors, healthy activities, generosity, spirituality, physical health, and mental health. They are taught in a developmentally appropriate way. This, what I'm holding here is third through sixth grade. But we also have second grade curriculum, first grade curriculum, kindergarten curriculum. And if we get things rolling in the high school, it's more of like a club-based, campaign-based order where the students write their own stuff and just advertise these right here. They advertise them to their fellow students, which is super cool as opposed to doing actual lessons. As a parent, I agree with some of the things that I've heard from other parents about it needing to be taught in the home. Absolutely, I do. But with the closing, because I just went seven seconds over three minutes. So in closing, what I want to say is that I know that I personally was not exposed to the information that's in here as a kid. And I personally, after starting to teach it, I've been using this personally in home, here, at work, with my fellow staff members. I love you guys. So like with everybody, like in parent meetings, all of it, it's the real deal and it's super helpful. So I really want to protect the curriculum. I'm not as concerned about what you call it. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next one is Kyra Gilson or Gibson. I'm sorry if I butchered your name.
Hi, I'm Kyra Gibson and I go, I am a freshman at WICCO and I just wanted to talk about the MHDs. I have ADHD and I'm just really thankful that you guys opened and see how much the MHDs really mean to us. My therapist is Natalie Stewart and she helps me a lot to help me cope with my ADHD during the day and help me find new ways to, like, just help me to find new ways to cope with it. And I'm really thankful for you guys for opening your eyes and seeing that they really mean to us, how much they mean to a lot of the MHDs, I mean, not the MHDs, how much they mean to the kids that have mental health. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Moving on to 6.0, Business Reports and Consent Agenda. We have a list of accounts payable, financial reports, et cetera. And I would entertain a motion to accept the Business Reports and Consent Agenda as presented.
I move that we accept the Business Reports as presented and Consent Agenda.
I second it.
So I'm properly moved and seconded that we accept the Business Reports and Consent Agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And as opposed, motion does pass. In New Business, we have the reappointment of Matt Long to the South Whitley Community Public Library Board of Trustees. Can I get a motion for that, please?
I make a motion, we reappoint Matt Long-
I make a motion, we reappoint Matt Long to the South Whitley Community Public Library Board of Trustees.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we, we reappoint Matt Long to the South Whitley Community Public Library Board of Trustees. Is there any discussion? And seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed? The motion passes. We have approval of the After-School Central's request to hire a WICCO Community School Corporation's school bus and bus driver for a trip to Cedar Point in Sandusky, Ohio on June the 20th. The center will pay for hourly drivers' wages, fuel, parking fees, liability insurance, and any other trip-related costs. Can I get a motion for that, please?
Can I move we approve?
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the After-School Central's trip to Cedar Point. Is there any discussant, discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed? The motion passes. In 7.3, we have a recommendation to hire an additional assistant principal at WICCO Junior/Senior High. Can I get a motion for that, please?
I move we recommend, or I move that we hire an additional assistant principal at WICCO Junior/Senior High.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we hire an additional assistant principal at WICCO Junior/Senior High. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed? The motion passes. 7.4, it is recommended the elementary special classes, art, music, and physical education in each school be restructured utilizing three certified full-time elementary school teachers. Can I get a motion, please?
I move that we recommend the hiring of certified positions for art, music, and PE.
I second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we hire an art, music, and physical education teacher full-time for the elementary schools. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to offer some clarification for the community on that. We now have those positions being taught by non-certified teachers in each building. There are three in each elementary, so there are six total. So we like to have certificated teachers in place for our students when possible, so when we say we're hiring three, what we're doing is we, we are gonna hire three licensed teachers for those areas that will be traveling between the buildings as a lot of other districts do, and they'll be sharing those teachers. So the elementary principals along with the curriculum director, Mr. Evans, will be working together to establish that schedule. Just for clarity, when we say there's three, it's to be shared upon the buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Pavarini. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed? The motion passes. 7.5, it is recommended the following job descriptions be approved for the elementary art teacher, music teacher, and PE teacher.
I move that we accept the job descriptions.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we accept the job descriptions as listed. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed? The motion passes. 7.6 is the approval of our annual field trips and the following one-time field trips. There's quite a list, and I'm sure you've all read them. Can I get a motion, please?
I move we accept the annual field trips as presented and one-time trips.
I second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we accept the annual field trips and the following one-time field trips as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed? The motion passes. We have no old business at this time, miscellaneous administrative items. Mr. Pavarini?
I don't have any administrative items, but do wanna take a moment to thank those students who came up here and addressed the board. I just want you to know how impressed that we are. I am personally with that. It takes a lot of character and a lot of guts to do that, and I'm proud of you guys for speaking your mind and coming up here and saying what you said and addressing the board tonight. So thank you very much for that. You should be very proud of yourself, because I am.
Thank you. Miscellaneous school board items. The next school board meeting is a work session, Wednesday, June 14th, at 4:00 p.m. at the WICCO Career Academy chatroom, and that is public and it is open, so, and I would encourage everyone to come to that. The next board meeting on a Monday night is June 19th at 6:30, right here in this room, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded that we adjourn tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
The motion passes. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming.